Would everyone please rise for the Budget of Allegiance?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mrs. Melzer.
Thank you. Juste Matusak?
Present.
Juste Keys?
Here.
Juste Patton?
Here.
Supervisor Cannon?
Here.
Juste Cress?
Present.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Here.
Clerk Melzer here.
Thank you. If you have any public comments, please fill out a card in the front and we'll hear you at the end of the meeting. If not, any item on the agenda you wish to speak to, we'll hear you at the podium. And with that, we will look for an approval of the agenda.
Sound moved. Support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Juste Patton?
Yes.
Juste Matusak?
Yes.
Juste Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Juste Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Melzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. And we'll take item number one, the consent agenda. Are there any concerns of board members?
Make a motion for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Support.
Are there any comments from the community? Roll call, please.
Juste Patton?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Juste Matusak?
Yes.
Juste Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Juste Cress?
Yes.
Clerk Melzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Item two, introduction of applicants seeking an appointment to the Conservation Committee.
Dear Board members, there are two terms open on the Conservation Committee. They are full terms, expiring June 30th, 2026. The committee holds terms of two years. Attached for your review is the applicant's application for appointment, and this new applicant is Julia Ude. Per the policy guidelines, an invitation has been extended to the applicant to attend the July 2024 board meeting, where an opportunity will be given to make a three-minute introduction. Thank you for your attention in this matter. Sincerely, Robert Cannon, Supervisor.
I make a motion for approval.
Is Julia here this evening? Thank you. And I would recommend approval because we have openings and she's on other boards and does a good job. We have a motion. Is there a support?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Juste Patton?
Yes.
Clerk Melzer, yes. Juste Matusak?
Yes.
Juste Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Juste Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item three, request approval for the Clintondale High School to host their annual homecoming parade. And if you make that motion, what number of year is that parade?
Dear Township Board of Clinton, Clintondale High School is asking for your permission to have our annual homecoming parade on Friday, September 27th, 2024, at Clintondale High School from 4:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. We will have a car caravan parade through the neighborhood to ensure the safety of students, staff, and citizens while still enjoying the spirited time of homecoming. Enclosed is the parade route. Sincerely, Alexander Taylor, Clintondale High School, Platoon 26 Advisor.
I make a motion for approval, and I defer to Treasurer Gilliam for the year.
Well, we need to support them.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to support that as the lone dragon on the board here, but I have no idea what year it is because I graduated in 1988, so I know that that wasn't the first year. It goes back a lot longer than that. I think like 59 or something like that, 1959?
It'd be nice to know. I mean, it's been going on for a long time.
Yeah.
So we have a motion, support? Roll call, please.
Juste Patton?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Juste Matusak?
Yes.
Juste Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Juste Cress?
Yes.
Clerk Melzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Item four, a contract modification for electrical improvements at the three Clinton Township pump stations.
Dear Honorable Board of Trustees, on June 13th, 2024, the Budget Ways and Means Committee met with the Director of Public Works, Mary Bednar, and the Township Engineer Scott Chabot to discuss an omission in the Rawhorn electric contract. The attached materials from AEW and Public Services details the underlying cause of this modification. A request has been made to have representatives from Rawhorn Electric at the July 8th Township Board meeting. Following the discussion, the committee voted unanimously to recommend the board approve a modification of $32,500 to the Rawhorn electric contract, bringing the contract amount to $369,574.56. Please contact the Director of Public Services, Mary Bednar, or Scott Chabot from AEW for further information or questions concerning this recommendation. Respectfully, Paul Gilliam, Treasurer and Chair for Budget Ways and Means.
I make a motion for approval.
Thank you.
Support.
We'll have to, yes. Well, Mr. Cress first, then you.
Yeah. This is coming from Budget Ways and Means, correct?
Correct.
Is there a reason they're not here doing a presentation for us today and came to you instead?
Generally speaking, we've seen a lot of these issues go to Budget Ways and Means.
Okay. I read here it's a contract bid error. Is that correct?
I would defer to Mr. Chabot.
Okay.
Yes, the contractor had an omission of the control panel that was listed in the advertisement bid and other items that were specified in the contract documents.
Is there a reason we didn't take the second lowest bidder because they had, you know, put it in their bid?
They had, likely, it looked like they had it in their bid. And then also, there was a fairly large discrepancy or difference still in the cost between the second bidder and the first bidder.
Okay. Did we approach the second bidder or we just gave the, this bidder, an opportunity to correct their bid after the fact?
Given the cost disparity, we first worked with the low bidder based on those conditions.
And they didn't meet the requirements or? I'm confused. I'm confused. Why, so they, the, this bidder missed it, missed the panel?
Yes.
And the second lowest bidder, or the second lowest bidder had it in their bid, why didn't we just go with the second lowest bidder?
He just told you, because they were more expensive.
So the cost for the panel, when we looked, we determined, it was, well, they had a cost of about $90,000, and we independently looked, and vendor that we've worked with in the past had it for $65,000. So, given those conditions, it seemed even with, if you were to add those in there, it was still a pretty large discrepancy or difference in the price. So, that's where we decided, it was decided to continue to work with the low bidder to see, you know, what the best options were on this, on this contract.
Mr. Cannon, Mary Bednar is on remotely attending. She's raising her hand and would like to speak.
Okay. Mrs. Bednar?
If I can clarify, so prior to working directly with the low bidder, Mr. Cress, we also did talk with our township attorney and went through all of our different options, and it was determined that if we could negotiate with the low bidder and get a lower price than the second lowest bidder, that would be the best option to go with. So, after working with them in negotiating, and we got that down, we then took it to Budget Ways and Means to discuss, and then now we're here to the board to discuss.
Okay. Mr. Gilliam?
Just one thing that I think needs to be added to the motion, if that's in agreement with the motion maker, and the second, this does require a budget amendment along with the motion.
Yes. I will make the motion for a budget amendment.
Both agree.
I do have one question with that, and I don't know if you can just, was this a union? Was the lower bidder a union?
That really doesn't matter. It does not matter.
Well, they are here tonight, actually. You guys, union contractor?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
But still, does that really matter?
In a sense, it does.
It does not.
Well, okay. Okay.
You clearly don't think so, but there are a lot of us that do.
They are a business person in our community. They have a right to bid on our contracts.
Absolutely.
They do.
Thank you.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
I believe, I believe Juste Patton made a friendly amendment to her motion, but I didn't hear Ms. Matusak also accepted that friendly amendment.
She did.
Okay. I did. I was nodding my head. Sorry, I should have spoken up.
Before we vote, there is a resident who wishes to speak. Is there anyone else on the board?
No.
Sir?
Having been at the Budget Ways and Means Committee meeting, I think a lot of people that have heard this tonight don't realize that we are actually splitting the, you know, the panel was in the bid package. It was missed by the winning bidder, and we now are splitting the cost of it with them, even though, you know, they literally, it was an error on their part of missing the bid, so, that people have to know that. We are spending $32,500, I believe it is, of our money, so.
But still less than the next bidder. Still less.
It's just very important for people.
Just make sure everyone knows that.
I think it's, it's important to let the citizens know, yes.
And the citizens should know.
You are really welcome, sir.
We are way below what we thought we would be.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cannon? Yeah, I just, I didn't make a comment the first time through. The bid, the bidder made a mistake and didn't put it in. Our staff made a mistake by not catching that error, and so what we've done is split the cost of this 50/50, which I think is probably the best solution one can come up with when there's an error on both sides. I think it's a fair solution.
And still a better deal for the township.
And still a better deal for the township.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Juste Patton?
Yes.
Juste Matusak?
Yes.
Juste Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Juste Cress?
No.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Melzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Item five, resolution to adopt amending building department fees ordinance.
These are presented in the packet, the building department fees, and this is a resolution. This is periodically done when costs go up, and it is, it used to be tied to an ordinance which would require us to send out a notice of hearing, and then we'd have to, you know, wait two more weeks after that. This way, we can update these fees as necessary, and they are in line with costs that are increasing, and I know that our director from the building department is here, if he wants to speak to that, but they are in the packet, and there are various cost increases.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions of board members? From the community? Floor is open for a motion.
Sound moved.
Support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Juste Patton?
Yes.
Juste Matusak?
Yes.
Juste Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Juste Cress?
No.
Clerk Melzer, yes, motion passes.
Kind of chuckle about that. Item six, request approval of school crossing guard invoice.
Dear Board members, attached for your review is the invoice from Chippewa Valley Schools for school crossing guards for the 2324 school year. A comparison of this year's bill with last year's follows. Chippewa Valley of 2023-24 is in the amount of $24,483.06, where last year in 2223, it was $23,349.93. Please review the attached invoice and approve for payment. Sincerely, Jessica Leha, Assistant Finance Director.
I make a motion for approval.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
This is for Chippewa Valley. I remember our discussion last year that Clintondale was going to start this program. We haven't got their invoice yet.
I don't think we've gotten their bill yet, but yes, they would be part of it because there are certain rules that the police department has to follow, and when they do, then we pay that bill.
Right. No, I was just wondering why we didn't, I guess, get them at the same time.
I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Juste Keys?
Yes, and I just want to say I echo Juste Matusak's question about that. It's been a couple of years now we've been asking. I do know that our departments have reached out, they've assured me of that. I know it was 2021 was actually the last time we gave Clintondale funding for this. There are still crossing guards there, so I really am hopeful that at some point, we will be able to have that partnership or relationship again, but I have been assured that our staff from the finance department has continued to reach out, so.
And I agree with you, except some of the crossing guards are because Clintondale wants them, not because our police department wants them, or because they're required by the state, and we will pay anything that's required.
We already have that relationship with them, so going back to what Ms. Keys just said, he hopes that we actually have that relationship. We already did that as of last year, we established that, and we're just waiting on their bill. That's all it is.
Well, hold on, just so we're not confused, we've had a longstanding relationship, they ended it in 2021, we haven't heard back from them since.
No, we got it last year.
Yeah, we got it last, we got it back at the beginning of the school, with the new superintendent.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm looking. That's the resource officer that I think you all are thinking about.
Not the crossing guard.
No. No, so just to recap, we've had a longstanding relationship with Clintondale. In 2021, it ended abruptly. They stopped sending us invoices. So what we should do is come back, and not us, to Mr. Cannon's point, I've been reassured that we have, but at some point, Clintondale should respond with invoices, and to Mr. Cannon's point, I do think you're right, that maybe some things have changed. The Department of Roads does a study that helps determine where these crossing guards are required to be, or the ones we're required to pay, but I will say 15 and Gratchit, you know, still has a crossing guard, that still should have a crossing guard, and I think this board should be, you know, compensating them for that, so.
When they give us the bill.
Absolutely. So I appreciate it, though. Thank you.
Roll call.
Juste Patton?
Yes.
Juste Matusak?
Yes.
Juste Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Juste Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Melzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Item seven, request approval to introduce ordinance 492.
Mr. Cannon, we discussed this at the last board meeting, it was a discussion that was brought to Budget Ways and Means Committee, and this is to streamline our liquor licensing processes, to help businesses, as well as just make things a lot easier for the businesses and the township. So, this is that introduction, and we discussed it at length in Budget Ways and Means, as well as the last board meeting.
Question?
Support.
And just to clarify, Mr. Cannon, that this is for liquor licenses that are being transferred business to business, this is not any of our free liquor licenses, we still make those decisions.
Correct.
And in these liquor licenses, the state and all of our various departments have signed off on them, so there's really not much for us to do.
Correct. Ready? Roll call.
Juste Keys?
Yes.
Juste Patton?
Yes.
Juste Matusak?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Juste Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Melzer, yes, motion passes. I don't know where that came from, sorry.
Okay, I think we're on the fence contract for the inclusive playground.
Item eight was deleted. Item nine, dear members of the board, as the project contract was finalized, it was determined by removing the six-foot fence from the original contract with Sinclair Recreation would save costs by going with another vendor. The township solicited six quotes for the six-foot fence from a variety of vendors. The tabulation sheet shows that Shelby Fence LLC provided the lowest quoted price of $36,384. This proposed vendor has demonstrated the capacity to meet the accelerated timeline without compromising quality or cost effectiveness. Additionally, it is important to mention that Shelby Fence is the preferred installation contractor for elite fence products, the producer of the specified fencing for this project. Due to construction schedule constraints, the bid policy of securing sealed bids for contracts over $20,000 could not be fully implemented, but the intent of the policy has been met. It is our recommendation to award the fencing contract to Shelby Fence LLC for $36,384 and a waiver of the bid policy. Your cooperation with this matter is greatly appreciated. Feel free to contact me with any questions you may have. Respectfully, Mary Bednar, Director of Public Services.
Comments?
That's a huge gap. Can you tell me?
I know.
Why such a, I mean, I'm looking at a $36,000 all the way up to $70,000. Are we getting apples to apples, or did we bid for the exact same thing for each company? Because that's a big gap.
It's almost double.
Anybody?
Mrs. Bednar is on the line.
Yeah, Mary's here.
I'd like to speak. So here's, here's what I can add to this discussion, and that is that this was originally part of the inclusive playground project, the company that we hired, Sinclair Recreation. They originally put it in. That price was dramatically higher. We believed we could get it much cheaper if we separated it out from the contract and bid it out separately. Now, we didn't technically bid it out, but we went out and got six quotes. We want the same fence that is currently around the splash pad, and so we saw bids for companies that provide that type of fencing for installation. The preferred vendor is the lowest bidder of the six people that they got prices from, and this is the lowest price, we're going with the lowest price, and so makes sense to me.
So, back to the same question, was this apples to apples, as Ms. Bednar can say that, because you're talking about $36,384 versus $79,800. That is a big gap between saying we're getting the same exact thing, so.
So, I can speak to that, Mrs. Patton. We gave all the bidders the same specifications, which was the Elite Fence, which is the exact same fence that we put up at Splash Pad, like Paul, or Mr. Gilliam had said, so it is apples to apples. Why the big differences? I think it depends on the labor, and if they're subcontracting it out, that was one of the reasons I think Sinclair was higher, was because they had to hire one of these companies, so it's kind of a prime with the sub. So, when we reached out to Elite, they gave us some of the different companies that had, that can, you know, that they've worked with, and then they said to Shelby, make sure we get a price from them because they're a preferred vendor. So we did reach out to six different companies and got the prices. I mean, I didn't ask them, why is your price so high, but based on my knowledge in the field and so forth, it could just be timing in trying to get workers and so forth, so there's, you know, there's several factors that could be included, but Shelby Fence is the preferred, one of the preferred contractors that the fencing company uses. And I will say, the contract is being reviewed by the township attorney, and we're making some minor revisions to it based on their comments, so if you, if you do approve this and you want to stay subject to the attorney's approval, that would be fine, but we are working with the fence company and the attorney to take care of those minor things.
And what's their timeframe, Ms. Bednar, in terms of having this done?
So, they, they need time to order it, but the fence won't go, that's one of the last things that go in for the inclusive playground, so the reason we need to get it ordered is A, to hold that price, and then also for them to get it ordered so that we can have the parks in time for the playground, and I think we're, I think we're shooting for the end of September, beginning of October at this point.
And that's for labor, the materials, everything, and I don't mean to just keep going at it, I'm just, the differences is incredible, so.
So, Mrs. Patton, one of my employees helped get this quote, and when I saw it, the first thing I said was, is this just the fence material? That was actually the first thing I said. So, in the quote, they actually put to buy and, you know, furnish and install, so it's the whole package, but I had the same question, so I understand where you're coming from.
Okay, thank you.
Julia, you okay?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine.
Juste Keys?
Just a quick question on the design of it. I see that there's the gates. Are those intended to be locked and secured at times, or no? That's going to be freely accessible to the public 24/7?
Actually, we're going to be locking it at night because our parks close at night, so they will be blocked, the latest would be 8:00 p.m., because that's our closing time of our parks, or in the winter, it's at dusk.
Is that the main motivation for the fence, is to?
No.
No.
No, actually not. The main motivation, excuse me, am I, am I talking over someone? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Ms. Bednar.
The, the, the main motivation for the fence is, the inclusive playground, the tendency, kids tend to like to run and try to flee, so that was one of the things that the parents had requested and the professionals had requested, is not many playgrounds are fenced in, but they want it fenced in, so that way, if a kid does decide to run away from its parent or, you know, there's a barrier, basically. So that was actually one of the attractions of why everyone's so excited about this playground.
Awesome, yeah, and it has been super successful. I know everyone's excited, and I'm just even thinking about other parks and other projects we've done, talking about fencing, which is getting my mind going, so thank you very much, Ms. Bednar. And thank you, Mr. Gilliam, or even the committee. I guess I should ask, how did, how did that come about, that we were able to see a cost savings in an existing contract and bid out just a portion of it? Was that something the department worked on, the committee?
So I think it was a combination of both. It was obviously going with the design-build concept. We say, okay, boom, our equipment's going to be game time, we're going to use their equipment, they're the preferred vendor for installing the equipment. Then they gave us an all-inclusive quote, and we said, hey, we think we can do this cheaper. We think we can do this cheaper. Another example are benches and garbage cans. The price of the game time garbage cans, we're like, you're kidding me, right? And so, we're looking for any ways that we possibly can to save money, so that means we can put more features into the park. And so, and I think to speak to the issue of, you know, why it would be so much cheaper with this particular bid, generally, when you're the preferred vendor, you're most familiar with installing that equipment. You have far more experience at it. If you're the, not the preferred vendor and you're not used to dealing with that particular fence equipment, you might be a little bit slower at it and not as efficient in the installation. That's speculation on my part, but I think that, you know, makes sense as an explanation.
Mr. Keys?
Thank you.
The other reason is, when we actually got the bid or the proposal, we took the garbage cans out and the benches right away, but I'm going to give credit to the McCollum Intermediate School District, which is one of our partners on this project. He was the one that said, hey, I'm bidding out playgrounds and fences right now, and I think you could do better. So he kind of drew our eye to it to say, I think you can do better. So I want to reach out to, that's where this inclusive committee's been so helpful. We have parents, we have the professionals, we have ISD, you know, it's been pretty critical, and he looked at it and said, hey, I think you can do better. So that's what drew our attention to it.
How long have they been around, Mary? Ms. Bednar? How long have they been around?
Excuse me, you don't have the floor. Julia, you have the floor.
Well, it was a question for Ms. Bednar, in terms of closing these gates. I know when, when I visit memory care facilities and other places where there are runners, that the locking mechanism, the closing mechanism of the gate is a two- or three-step process[1589.58] because that makes it harder for folks to operate the latch. I'm wondering if any consideration was given to that.
So we actually did discuss that. And there was concern that if there was an issue, an emergency, that it would be too complicated for all the participants to be able to get out. So the parents that thought it was so important said, as long as there's a gate on it, it slows them down enough that we can catch them.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's so, so that was kind of, so yeah, we actually had a very extensive conversation about that because I thought the same thing.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Patton?
Thank you. I was just asking how long Shelby Fence has been around, Ms. Benner?
I do not know the answer to that.
Yeah, I was looking up in Google, and I can't find them in terms of here in, here in Michigan at all. I see Alabama, but I don't see them in Michigan. So, but okay.
So if I might go ahead and make the motion to approve the contract and waive the bid policy for the purposes of approving this. And if seconded, I just want to make another comment.
I'll second that.
Okay. So the other comment I just wanted to make is that we are in the process of scheduling a groundbreaking for this project. And that date, tentatively, but we're pretty close, I'd say about 85%, is July 18th at 11:00 AM. And want to encourage the board members and the community to come on out. This is going to be a great project. And it's one of those projects that I take a personal point of pride in. When we first did the research on this, one of the things we found is that Clinton Township has a dramatically higher percentage of families with somebody with a disability within that, within the family. That means that we are actually taking steps to serve everyone in our community. Everyone, every child, multi-generational features, everyone deserves a place to play and recreate. And that's the beauty of this project.
Along with everything else, they get to have at the same time, splash pad, et cetera. So I agree. Do we have a motion?
Give me two and a second.
Roll call, please.
Treasure Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Matusak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 10, request to schedule a public hearing for a new IFT for Kendall Electric.
Dear honorable board members, the charter township of Clinton Economic Development Corporation met on Wednesday, June 12, 2024. To review the above referenced industrial facility exemption certificate request, all requirements have been found to be in order. Please schedule a public hearing pertaining to this request for Monday, July 22, 2024. This request was on the last meeting agenda, but the date listed for the public hearing was incorrect and was listed as the same date as the board meeting rather than a future date. Therefore, this request is being resubmitted. Respectfully submitted, James Elrod Assessor.
I make a motion for approval.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Matusak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Treasure Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. And item 11, request to approve an SDM and SDD liquor license.
Your board members, applicant YNA Station, Inc., located at 36887 Gorsebeck Highway, Clinton Township, Michigan, has successfully fulfilled the requirements per the building department and fire departments, as well as the police background check and payment of the application fees necessary to acquire both the SDD and SDM liquor license transfers. Based on this fulfillment of requirements, YNA Station, Inc., requests approval from this honorable board. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Kim Meltzer, clerk.
I make a motion for approval.
Second.
Comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Matusak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Treasure Gilliam?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public comments? We have several. Sam Bacheau?
Good evening, board members. As you know, I sent each of you copies of the permits issued to Consumer Energy at 35, 350 Kelly Road. Permits issued included lighting cable and a permit for the new lighting and gate opener issued on November 19, 1919, that expired on November 18, 1919, and a barbed wire top chain link fence permit for 520 feet issued on April 22, 2020, that expired on April 22, 2021. And also noted, the planning department has the engineering plan from the, our engineering firm, AEW, dated on February 12 of 2020, Phase 1 of Consumer Energy's property. The board actually did not approve the first ever site plan for this property until March 13, 2023. The question of the day is how these permits and plans were granted before the board approved the site plan without ever appearing before the ZBA, as many variances needed were for financial reasons only and not legal for the ZBA to even approve. Next is with the permits expired for the barbed wire top chain link fence instead of the required masonry screen wall, when will the vinyl strips be installed as required on the site plan? It's noted on that permit that it has to meet the plan. Well, the plan has vinyl strips, and we need them. I mean, it's terrible. This is crucial as we have been putting up with the 24 hours a day, seven days a week, industrial action next to our homes. When will the hedge row be installed to protect the walkers on the public sidewalk on Kelly? There again, permits are all expired long time ago. Next, what action has the board taken to educate the employees that issued these permits and engineering plans without the needed board approvals? Clearly needed as after this, GU was given a certificate of occupancy without the required board approval. And of course, the Old Hague Lighting Facility has the same permits, engineering plan, and even the DPW approvals without the needed ZBA or board-approved variances and site plan. This obviously is, can get very expensive for the residents. We pay very much to have a zoned community, and we expect it to be held up. Thank you.
Second is Mr. Rick Irons.
This is my first time here at a meeting, but I'm here because I think it's embarrassing, and I'm totally ticked off at all this hit hate mail coming out on elections. Since when is it not okay to vote what you think your constituents in the district that elected you want you to vote? Why do you have to march lock, in lockstep with certain people on the board? And then if you don't, you get criticized. And this group, Republicans pretending to be Democrats, which is out of St. Clair, Michigan, a post office box there, has put out this mail. You can't find a listing. You can't find anything for them. I know Ms. Patton personally, she was an Army vet. She's no, no-nonsense, strong-willed person. And this board needs somebody like that. And I'm willing to bet that the same clowns that are responsible for the hit pieces also got Noah Cannon to run for supervisor to try and take votes away from the, probably, in my opinion, the strongest candidate for supervisor and the smartest, Vicky Walber. I'm convinced that we need four new trustees that are strong on common sense and not looking to make a living off the public trough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Paul?
My name is Paul Shorsh. I live at 38057 Moravian Drive. And I'm here to tell you guys, my neighbor's car was just stolen, all right? All right, the crime is getting pretty bad, and we don't need it, okay? You know, you guys do know my voting record was altered. Information was stolen off there. But I think Bob had something to do with it. It was restored back on there, all right, some of the information. And for the first time ever, all the documents I got from Kim Metzler, first time I finally got a voter ID number on all my documents. This is the first time I ever got a voter ID number, other than the one that I got from the state of Michigan, the election bureaus. And they got me voting at midnight every time I voted in the last 10 years. All right, but I want to think at least I got some of my information back on my voting record, not all of it. And I finally got a voter ID number, which I never, ever got from Clinton Township. And I got a lot of documents here. And I got to tell you, I think we all got to do something about this, especially you, Kim. When they tell you to alter someone's record, you got to say, no, not we just do what they tell us to do. We got to stick together. We got to fight the state of Michigan and say, no, we're not altering people's records. We're not going to do it. I'd like to see all you guys check your voter record. Just, just see. All right, five more seconds. All right. But I just want you guys to do that, and so you know what you got, all right? Our Secretary of State, Jocelyn Benson, seven-time loser in the court of law, just one thing. When you're an elected official, the chief of police, you should be surety bonded. She doesn't even have a surety bond. Can you imagine that?
We can't control that.
All right, I know, but we need to.
I can make a, I can, she can ask speak, but I can make a brief comment. No, I can tell you right now, she drives me nuts because of all the things she does to make sure voting is accurate here in Clinton Township. And she does. Her and her staff are very particular and very precise. I can exactly tell you that. And that's all we're going to, I can't, we're not going to talk about, you want to come to my office, you can.
I'd like to.
You're welcome to.
Michigan is one making her job hard.
I agree. We're done. Okay, we're done.
Right.
Fred?
Good evening, board. My name is Fred Neenstedt. I live at 41362 Justin Drive. I'd like to talk about community standards for pornography, especially directed towards children. So first, I'd like to define where I come from with my morality, okay? If you can see, I have the word Jesus here in the center between trust and respect, right? That's a social construct. Above is faith and below is belief. That is a spiritual construct. That's me. That's my belief system. But I don't believe that I can imply or, or implore my belief system upon the community. The community standards is what determines that. Now, the community can take this word Jesus out at any time and put in the word truth. And all of this is true. It makes perfect sense in the same way as a moral construct. Now, I would like to offer that the board should consider the implications of what is happening in our schools. Our schools are teaching a morality that is based on what they believe to be free speech. The schools don't have free speech rights. The students don't have free speech rights. They're limited. The first case was a Communist Party leader, 1927. The Supreme Court defined the limits of free speech. In 1973, public pornography was defined by the Supreme Court. There's a three-prong test for community standards. What I want to understand is, are we really looking at what schools are teaching? I've been fighting for three years to get the school board to actually discuss the matter. They will not. So they will deny my side, my rights for free speech because they put silence, it's a tyranny of the majority, over my voice. So when publicly displayed sexually graphic material in our communities is on display for children, we need to stand up and pay attention. We need to make a clear choice as to what is and is not acceptable for our community. I would hope that you would look at your ordinances and understand exactly what your role could be if you choose to make it so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, we'll take, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Keys, supported by Mrs. Patton. Roll call, please.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Matusak?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Treasure Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.